Good evening and welcome to City Limits, the show to provide you with information about the people, places, and events that shape the character of our community. Joining me tonight is Councilman Mark Harder, County Council District 7.
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Let's talk about your district a little bit. What's kind of the borders of the district? I know you're the far west, right?
Sure. District 7 is the western side of the county, basically 141, Highway 141 west to the county line, and the Missouri River on the north to the Merrimack River on the south. It's the largest of the seven districts in geographic area.
But populations, based on the county, I think it's got to be pretty much the same population.
Right, right.
Yeah, but you've got a lot of developable land out there yet.
Sure, sure. We have, we take in the areas, incorporated areas of Clarkson Valley, Chesterfield, Baldwin, Ellisville, Eureka, Wildwood, a little bit of Manchester, a little bit of Valley Park, and then there's an unincorporated section down by the Merrimack River.
Okay, so your district actually is mostly incorporated as opposed to being unincorporated.
It's about 90% incorporated.
And you've got the big cities out there.
We've got the big cities too, big suburbs.
Yeah. What, you're the newest council member on St. Louis County Council, replacing Greg Quinn, who recently retired from being a county councilman.
Sure, sure.
What encouraged you to run for county council?
Well, it's all that big money that we get.
I know that's not true.
That's true. I was very active in politics in West County in the last number of years. I've been an alderman in the city of Baldwin, and I was elected first in 2011, and then reelected in 2013, and two-year terms. And then when Greg decided he wasn't going to run and retire, he's been in the council for about 24 years. I had already talked to him probably six months prior and said, hey, if you ever think about not running, I'd be interested in running. And so I think I was the first person he called, and we started from there, and I filed, and two other people filed in the primary, and one other person filed in the general, and we were off to the races.
There you go. So now for four years, you're going to be the councilperson representing District 7.
That's the idea.
Yeah, sounds good. What are some of the, you've got a lot of corporations now out in your particular area because that's, it's kind of a mixture of residential and corporate in District 7 as opposed to, you know, the mixture that they have elsewhere. What do you have more of residential or corporate?
Oh, it's by far residential. We do have along the Highway 40 corridor, a lot of office buildings, a lot of medical buildings. We have a number of corporations that moved into the area, some that moved out. Down along the Manchester Road corridor, it's more service-oriented, you know, repair-type shops, car dealers, retail businesses like that, small mom-and-pop businesses, and some big box stores. And then you get into, out into Wildwood, you've got a very rural area where horse farms and some farming and some logging, and then mixed in with residential development out there. If you drive past Highway 109 and go west, the zoning is such that it's one, it's one house per three acres, whereas east of 109, you've got probably five houses on an acre. So it's quite a bit different in density once you get past Highway 109.
What, you know, talking about, you know, land and so on, I didn't mention, you know, you are in real estate, that's what you basically do.
Right.
What does people look for nowadays? Do they look for more land or do they look for more houses and less land? What's the, what is the trend?
I think the trend is more house and less land. I think especially when you get older, like we all are. Either one for a living or more house but less yard to take care of. People like their game rooms, people like their extra offices, they like extra places, big eating areas and big family rooms. So to accommodate that, you need, you know, a house at 3,000 to 4,000 square foot sometimes. But not everybody's budget can afford that type of home. But some people still like the land, and I think that's the popularity of the Wildwood area because you are, you know, heavily wooded area, sometimes on the side of a cliff, sometimes on nice property, but you do have at least three acres, sometimes more around you. And sometimes you can't even see your neighbor depending on where the house is in the neighborhood.
So you can pick your choice pretty much is what you're really saying.
Right. It's a very good mix of subdivision-type homes, small bungalows to larger subdivision homes to estates. We've got some very expensive real estate in Chesterfield and Wildwood, parts of Baldwin, where, you know, prices start in half a million dollars and go up.
Yeah, well, that's, that's great. What do you foresee in the future? You see a lot more development out that way in housing and businesses?
Housing is at almost a, as I call, onesies and twosies rate right now because the landmass is such that unless you're going to tear something down, there isn't a lot of buildable property. And with the zoning in Wildwood at one house per three acres, you have a situation where, there isn't a good spot to put a subdivision per se, but you might have a good spot to put one or two homes. So we're seeing a lot of little micro subdivisions going in where you have a street with a cul-de-sac and maybe four houses, or maybe one house on a piece of property. So there really isn't a lot of big developments when it comes to those areas left. We're pretty much built out.
Pretty much built out.
When it's come to that, yeah.
Okay. What, there's a lot of amenities out in your district too, like the Lermar Sculpture Park. Is Creve Cora Lake in your district?
No, actually, those two places are in other districts.
Oh, really?
The Sculpture Park is in District 3, which is Collin Westinger's district, and the Creve Cora Lake is in Sam Page's district, Councilman Page, and that's up towards Maryland Heights. Well, we do, we have Faust Park, which has the carousel, and the restored farm homes have been moved there. It's a great opportunity there to bring your family and see the Butterfly House and other amenities. We have Rockwood Reservation, we have Babler State Park, plus all the little municipalities have little parks in them. So we have a lot of parks, a lot of things to do. We also have Six Flags, which is a great place to bring your family and...
I think everybody, everybody's heard of Six Flags, that's for sure.
That's right. So Six Flags sits, you know, in my district as well, so there's a lot to do out that way. And very good schools, Rockwood School District, Parkway School District, very, you know, high-scoring schools in any way you judge them. Crime rate's very low in all the municipalities out there. We have very good police forces, some patrolled by St. Louis County on a contract basis, some are incorporated police departments like Baldwin, Ellisville, Manchester, Chesterfield all have their own police forces.
And you also have an air, you have the second-largest airport in the St. Louis area?
Yeah, actually, I didn't realize that until we met with the airport director a couple weeks ago, that actually Spirit is the, is the third-largest in traffic in the state of Missouri. So you have Lambert, you have Kansas City, and you have Spirit. So a lot of corporate traffic out of there, a lot of hangar space. So there's a lot of companies that have their fleets of planes stored there and use this Midwest center location to fly everywhere in the world from that, from that airport.
My favorite part out there is the airshow. Remember when they used to have the airshows there?
Yeah, that's great, yeah. Yeah, it was, and we talked to John Bales, who's the administrator out there, and I think he's looking at 2016 as the next airshow. They have a, usually about every two years in order to get the Blue Angels here. So they're trying to put plans together now for 2016 from what I've been told.
Hey, that's good. I'll look forward to that because I really used to enjoy that.
Oh, yeah.
Of course, my favorite plane was the Harrier.
Oh, yeah.
Which is one of the slower jets, but...
Right, one of the noisier ones too.
Noisier, and you see it take off and, you know, it's just amazing that something that big can just kind of just lift off.
Yeah. It's, well, my office is in the valley, Chesterfield Valley, which is a huge retail outlet area with two outlet malls and a regular mall. You have, every time they have an airshow, we actually get a couple of airshows in because they come a week before and practice. And so if you come, you can sit on the Walmart parking lot and watch the Blue Angels and everybody else practice up to a couple of days before the show. So you can get multiple shows if you want to.
Hey, I never thought about that. That's a, that's a real good idea.
It is, it is.
Yeah. What, recently, they've done a lot of development down there in the valley with the two new outlet malls and so on. How is that going, or do you have any sense of how that's...
My indication and my own visits to the property is it looks, looks great. The two outlets malls, if you're not familiar with them, are about a mile apart from each other, and they're both outdoor-type malls. They have some covered space, but mostly outdoor. And, you know, the holidays, you couldn't get on the parking lots when the last holiday. So I hope they're, they're staying strong throughout the year, not just a holiday place to go. But it will be a destination for a number of people to come to if you come to the Chesterfield Valley to shop at either one of those malls.
Sounds good. Now, how is, remember several years ago, they had a big flood down there, and they rebuilt, I guess they rebuilt a flood wall?
A levee, yes.
A levee, and I guess made it higher or something?
Higher, stronger, wider, everything. And there's so much, there's a lot more at stake this time around. Before it was farmland, an airport, and a bunch of warehouses, and now you've got probably the most expensive ground in St. Louis County underneath or around that flood plain. So there's a lot of neat things going on down there. We have an ice hockey arena that you can rent or take skating lessons, and a number of high school hockey teams practice there. We have, of course, the Outland malls, the regular malls, hotel development, fast food, fine dining, office space, of course, the airport. So it's all, it's in an area that really is, could grow even more. There's still a lot of space down there for bigger businesses and bigger, bigger investment.
So there's still quite a bit of farmland down there?
There is on the west side of the airport. You also, we also have an 18-hole golf course down there called The Landings that basically runs parallel to the main runway that's just outside the fence of the airport, so you can play in that area and watch the planes come in at the same time.
Oh, that's unique. That's kind of unique.
Kind of unique, yeah.
Kind of like some of the golf courses they have in California and Florida where you actually have a landing strip in your backyard.
Right.
You know, they, these people have bordered...
Right.
The golf courses, which is kind of unique.
Sure, sure.
It's unique.
No, it's a fun place, and a lot of the high school teams use that as their base course for their golf teams and things like that.
Yeah. Since you're new on the county council, I'm sure when you were running, you had some goals or some things you wanted. What are some of your goals for your term on the county council this particular term?
Couple things. I ran on a platform of getting the fiscal house in order for St. Louis County. We've had many years of lackluster budgets and a number of different little scandals and malfeasance, to say the least. And one of the things that I was very interested in, both in our current county executive and his challenger at the last election, Rick Stream, is that they were both focused in those same areas as well. And having a top-down audit from a outside firm, not just the county auditors, to try to set the record straight, clean up house, find where money is not being allocated properly, and if there is any problems, need to get them corrected quickly so that we can build on the 2015 budget to 16, 17, and so on properly without having a weak base of where is this money coming from. That's, that's one thing. The other thing is responsible development. I think we've done a real good job in West County with getting people involved in development, whether it's a fast food place or a new subdivision, trying to get people involved at the grassroots level, right when they're starting to think about developing it, so that people buy in or at least have input into that development before it reaches a planning and zoning board or Board of Aldermen, and they sign off on it, and then everybody says, oh, I didn't know about that, or I wasn't aware that this was going to be here and not there. And that seems to help a lot and spurs business along because they know that they're not going to get, that business is not going to get a big pushback when they want to try to relocate to an area like West County. So we've tried to, I guess, be more proactive with that kind of response, get people involved. Couple other things I've been involved in and want to make sure that our roads are maintained properly. One of the functions of government is to protect us all through police and as well as provide essential services such as public works, highways, and the like. And some of our roads, even in West County, have been neglected over the years. And when I ran for alderman, that was a big portion of my campaign was to get our streets back in order and not neglect them. They all need work, no matter whether their streets are in blackjack or Baldwin. Roads wear out, they get potholes, they need new curbs, and we have to stay on top of that. And I think that's a very basic function of government. Those are some of the bigger items. A couple of the other things, we're just getting good representation of an opposite party on the St. Louis County Board. And I think there's new ideas need to be brought to that board, and hopefully I can do that in the years to come.
You were talking about budgets. You know, a lot of, a lot of residents don't really realize that budgets, when you think about doing, especially roads, I mean, you may be five years out if you're going to build a new road. A lot of people don't realize that.
Right, right. Yeah, roads are one of the most expensive investments that we have in a city, and you have to keep on them. We, years ago, decided that we needed, in Baldwin, needed to invest at least a million dollars every year of the budget in roads. And that wasn't, that was just maintenance. That was putting in broken curbs, that was pothole, that was slab replacements, that was maybe some new traffic lights or whatever were the issues of that time. And there was a couple of years where they tried to cut budgets and said, oh, we'll just skip this year of streets or reduce that year. Well, then you play catch-up the next year because the roads keep wearing out every time we have a snowfall.
Yeah.
And salt and everything else. And so if you don't keep that constant investment, you get way behind.
Yeah, well, you constantly have those potholes, you know, they, they always seem to pop up...
Oh, yeah.
Or pop out, I guess would be the proper term.
Right.
But, you know, there's always, you know, even, even a small community like ours, we spend 150,000 to 200,000 hours a year maintaining sidewalks and streets.
Right, right.
And, you know, a lot of, a lot of residents don't really realize what it takes. And when you look at the county basis, you know, unincorporated county is a huge area that St. Louis County is responsible for.
Sure.
And it takes a lot of maintenance.
That's right, that's right.
The other, you know, the other thing county has a lot of is snow removal. I mean, whenever there's a snowstorm, I mean, they just out there and going, and you've got to have the trucks, you've got to have manpower, you've got to have the salt, so it's kind of, kind of an expense.
Yes, and I guess, knock on wood, we have been lucky this, this winter. We haven't had as harsh a winter as we've had in the past, so hopefully some of that budget money can go towards streets that we may have allocated towards salt or to overtime or to trucks or whatever we need, that maybe we can move some money around. If we don't have a big snowstorm here by the end of March, I think we're in good shape if we can just make it through the, through the month of March.
Yeah, I hope it don't snow too much either for the rest of the year, but I don't know why I'm going to do it all to salt. You know, everybody, from last year, we got, almost everybody was pretty about running out. I mean, if we'd had another snowstorm...
Yeah.
I'd have been putting pure sand down and no salt to mix. This time I got a lot of salt, so...
Well, we were doing the same in Baldwin. We were mixing sand and salt towards the end because it was like, one more snowstorm, one more snowstorm or ice. And everybody, even though we have a huge storage facility, we were running out as well. And so we were trying to add everything we can to it to keep it, catch up from snowstorm to snowstorm. And like I said, we bought a whole bunch to fill in what we didn't use, and now we've got salt for probably the next two years if we keep these mild winters up.
Yeah, if it's, if the rest of them are like this one, if we have the next five years, like I said, I've got five years worth.
There you go, there you go.
What, you know, you, let's, let's talk a little bit about you yourself.
Okay.
I know you're from North County originally.
Right, I grew up in the Normandy area, was educated at Ascension School in Northwoods, and went to Christian Brothers College, CBC, when it was located on Clayton Road over in Clayton, Richmond Heights area. And then went to UMSL for college, majored in marketing and political science, and then went out into the workforce and then went back for an MBA, tried to do that and work and start a family, and never quite completed the MBA but got about halfway through. And then got into business and then raising a family. I have two sons, one's now grown and out in the workforce. He went to Rankin Technical College, which is a great college, and for what he wanted to do. And then my second youngest, my youngest is a sophomore at Mizzou studying engineering. So he's, he's getting through his calculus classes as we speak.
Yeah, that's, I, I remember those days.
Starting to get sweaty, hot just thinking about it.
I calculated. It was a little tough.
And married Kathy. We've been married almost 24 years, and so we live in Baldwin. We lived in a little bit of unincorporated area, then it became Chesterfield, then we moved from there to where we are now in Baldwin.
Very good. What, I might as well ask, I might as well pop the big question. I always, every guest I've got on this show, I always ask what high school you went to. And you already mentioned it.
I already mentioned it, CBC.
You already mentioned it, CBC, so, you know, it, you kind of beat me out on that one there, but hey, you know what to...
Hey.
But in business-wise, you're a real estate, you're a real estate agent or what do you basically do?
I'm a real estate agent broker with Berkshire Hathaway Alliance.
Okay.
We're located in the Chesterfield Valley, and that is right by Annie Gunn's restaurant on the east end of the valley, and been with them 15 years. And it's been a great company, and it's a, we have six locations throughout the St. Louis area. We used to be Prudential Alliance, and the Berkshire Hathaway came, Berkshire Hathaway came in and bought the Prudential Alliance name, so that converted all of our offices to a Berkshire Hathaway franchise, name, marketing, backroom support, everything.
Yeah, but they got, they got quite an extensive support network from what I understand.
Yes.
How do you foresee the housing market in St. Louis? Just on your own personal opinion, how do you see the housing market in the next five years throughout the St. Louis County region?
I think, I think we'll be in pretty good shape in most areas. St. Louis, as you know, is a very micro markets when it comes to real estate and other things. And so you could have one zip code that's right next to another zip code that is doing quite well and one not doing so well. You could have one area on one side of the county being different than the other side of the county. So you can't, to say the whole area is doing great or the whole area is doing bad, you can't do that. It's almost by zip code and almost by neighborhoods within those zip codes, how those areas are. And a lot of it is based on the condition of the homes, the amenities of the homes. The school districts play a big part of that, especially with young families that are moving up, want to buy a bigger home, they have kids, they're thinking about the school districts. Where are we going to send the kids to school? Unless they decide to go private schools in there, then it doesn't matter that much, but it still does when it comes to trying to resell your home. And school districts are a big, a big portion of that. And in the overall condition, maintaining a home is very important and in keeping it up to date. And if you're not doing that as a property owner, whether you're going to sell it in a year or five years or 10 years from now, it'll catch up with you, as you know, with homes. So you've got to maintain them, you've got to make sure that they get the maximum for the market price for that area.
It, you're talking about, you know, maintenance on homes and so on. I know county has, you know, they have programs for property maintenance, and if there's distressed houses, I think they call them, then they issue, I guess, notices that you have to maintain them. But that's basically minimum housing standards, correct?
Right, right.
That, that just brings it up to where it's livable.
Right.
And a lot of people don't understand that.
Right, right. Yeah, the difference between a livable housing standard and one that somebody wants to live in is two different things. And making it marketable. You know, having granite countertops is a livable thing that, but it's not necessary for that house to pass inspection or to be livable. But it's nice to be marketable when it comes to that kind of feature. Things like that are important, and I've always stressed that, even in Baldwin, we had some issues with property maintenance, especially coming through this recession with the bankruptcies and foreclosures and short sales and things like that. That can, you have too many of those in a neighborhood that can really bring down the values if those homes are not properly maintained until they're settled. And so we did a big push to keep the banks on target with those homes, making sure that they were cutting the grass, that they were doing minimal maintenance while those homes were vacant until they could, you know, be sold. And most of them were eventually, and still are. But we kept, our public works people kept a close tabs on them. They knew who all the banks were, they knew where the homes were, they plotted them on a map, and so they would check on them and just making sure that those homes were being taken care of.
Just kind of spur the people on, hey, you need to do this, you know?
Right, because the owners have left, the families have left for whatever reason. And this is, you know, that home is just a file folder on somebody's desk in Cleveland, and they've never been there, they've never seen it. All they know is, is a grass being cut, hopefully there's no leaky pipes, that the roof is not leaking, it's a vacant home, and it needs to be maintained, and because it will pull down the value of the other homes around it.
Okay. Okay, as we close, I was beginning to wrap up here. What is the most interesting thing you've done or seen on the council so far?
Well, as you know, we've had our fair share of protesters at the meetings, and I was going to the meetings before I was sworn in, and that was probably the biggest part of the protesting and the activity that went on. It's kind of tapered off recently. We still have a few that still come to the meetings and have their protest speeches or chanting, things like that. So that's, you know, it's part of a republic that we live in, and it's part of the democracy and the system that we, we live in. You have to be able to speak your, your time and speak your, your mind, but you do it in a respectful way, you do it as adults, and if there is a way of moving your issue forward, we need to do that in the proper way as well. And so it's amazing to see the different groups, some that just come to spout and to get heard and to be on TV, and then others that come with a plan and handouts and already working to get things, problems accomplished. And I think those people are going to move the ball, so to speak, a lot, a lot further than people that just come to hear their voices on TV. And I appreciate that type of input when people have taken that time to come up with a plan to move their issues forward. It shows that, you know, things can be done properly.
Yeah, they're committed to it in other words.
And they're committed to it.
They have a commitment to it as opposed to some spur of the moment or possible spur of the moment.
Right, and it's thought out, and they've got cooperation, they've got people behind them that will work to get some of those solutions done. One thing I learned when I first ran for office, I'd get calls on barking dogs or potholes or whatever, or just somebody wants to call and spout to their alderman, and I'd, I'd listen to them for 10, 15 minutes, and at the end I'd say, okay, what is your solution? And a lot of them said, I don't have a solution, that's why I'm calling you. And I'm like, you know, you've got to, you've got to be able to have a solution as part here, you know, and we're, we're in this together. And that really got them thinking, and they usually came up with a solution or at least someplace to start instead of me starting in that area of solution, so.
Sounds good. All right, well, thank you very much for any remark.
Appreciate it.
Really appreciate it. It was a very, very nice interview.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for watching our show this evening. If you have any questions for me, you can contact me at www.cityofblackjack.com or call me at area code 314-355-0400. Thank you, good evening. Thank you, good evening.